All right, this meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel 18 and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. And I'm just going to read a little quote again to start the meeting. If you broadcast your internal dialogue for all your neighbors to hear, the words you say to yourself, would it be kind?
That's a good one.
That was a good one. All right. So we are going to get started with the meeting. We'll start with public and select board information that is not currently on the agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to share? Did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome Kayla Erkhart. She's in the back row there hiding, she's waving now, to the board. She will be, she's joining administration as the executive assistant, and right now she'll be doing a lot of the communications functions for the town. So just wanted to show you her face and introduce you.
Hi Kayla. Yeah, she's already started really strong with doing some of the social media.
There'll be flashes in a row.
Yeah, yeah, it's very exciting, yes.
Cool, welcome.
Yes, happy to have you.
All right, yes, Art.
I just want to congratulate Christine and the rec department for the light up of the trees on Saturday. The weather was horrible, but they did a great job. The donuts were great and the cookies were great, and the hot cocoa was great. And we had a really good turnout considering the weather wasn't very good, but they did a great job.
It's December, Art, what do you expect on the weather?
Well, it was raining before and after, we got lucky, yeah, we got lucky there.
Yeah, it was a good day in Eastham.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to everyone, the Windmill Weekend Committee is starting to meet already, and they're looking for ideas for this year's festival theme. So they want nominations to be submitted to eastham@gmail.com. And people join the Windmill Weekend group on Facebook if you want, you can put your suggestions there. They want submissions by January 25th for the theme.
Do they need volunteers too, Amy?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And the weekend will be held on the 8th, 9th, and 10th of September this year, so. Seems like a long way off, but seems to come faster every year.
It does. Thank you.
Lower Cape TV had their grand opening of their space in Orleans, and it is wonderful to see that they have a home that they can grow into. And so if you get an opportunity, stop by and check it out, it's pretty nifty, so.
Great. All right, seeing nothing else, nothing from the public, we're going to jump right in to the Nauset Regional High School Building Project presentation. We have Chris Easely, the Chair of the Nauset Regional School Committee here. Hi Chris. And, I'm sorry, Judy.
Judith Schumacher, Vice Chair.
Thank you Judith for being here too. I'm going to turn it over to you, we have presentation, or wait, we need to.
Convene.
Oh convene, sorry.
We have to convene.
We have a quorum, so I call the meeting to order of the Finance Committee.
Okay, great, thank you. All right.
I'd like to thank you for having us here during a presentation concerning the January 10th vote on the request for additional funding for the high school building project. The community faces a challenge in completing the vision of education that is represented in the building project for Nauset Regional High School. That challenge comes in the form of a cost increase that is over the estimate. The cost increase is represented in the contractor's bid to construct the high school. It's important to remember that the original cost estimate is three years old. It should also be noted that in the past, we were dealing with an estimate, the best calculations of professionals. Currently, we have a bid. A bid is the actual cost that the contractor will charge us to build the school as designed. This increase in construction cost is caused by many factors: labor shortages, material supply problems, transportation issues, and our location. One of the biggest factors is the COVID pandemic and the crazy economic conditions it has brought on our society. The Nauset system doesn't stand alone in its challenges. Of the MSBA's, the Massachusetts School Building Associations, 16 current building projects, all in various stages of development, they are all over their estimated budgets by similar amounts. It is just a statement of the times we live in. It is as a result of these challenges that the Nauset community has a question before it concerning the future of education for our children. So let us take a minute to review how we got here and look at the options available to us moving forward. The concern of a 50-year-old high school building and its deficiencies came to a head in 2014. It was realized at that time that it would take millions of dollars to maintain the building in its current form. The trouble was that the current form was old and tired, and at 50 years old, it seemed a poor use of resources to pump millions of dollars into an old building. The most cost-effective solution was to look to rebuild or completely rehab the building or a combination of both, which is the path that we as a community chose. In 2015, we applied to the MSBA to be a part of their school building program, that is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We were looking at that point in time to minimize the costs on local taxpayers and to get the state to contribute funds to address our building problems. In 2015, the MSBA turned us down. We applied again in the fall of 2016, and we were accepted into their program. At the four town meetings in the spring of 2017, the citizens of our community voted to approve $1.3 million in funding for a feasibility study of Nauset Regional High School. And that feasibility study is the first step in the MSBA's building program. Judy?
Okay, so from then, from late 2017 to late 2019, began a two-year, what I call the design process. And the first things that happened were we laid down some foundational elements. First of all, the Nauset Regional School Committee reviewed and discussed what the school should look like, the configuration of the school. Should it remain a four-year high school and a three-year middle school? Should we go with five and two? Should we move things around? So this was discussed in late 17, and the committee voted to keep the four-year high school and the three-year middle school, mainly because we had a program that we felt was very successful, was tested and worked, and that there was no reason to change it. Following that, the MSBA stepped in, and they, using their same formula, the same methodology they use with every single project they work on, set the size of the school. And then, following that, the staff, the faculty, the administration at the high school began developing the educational vision. And I bring this up because the educational vision is the whole foundation, lays out the whole foundation for what the design really is. This is not a project chasing a number. This is a project addressing what we feel the education should be for Nauset high school students. And how the building itself can support and enhance the learning that goes on there, so that it becomes an element and a tool in the learning. And some of the things that you will see in that educational vision is the focus on our strong academic program, as well as our very strong performing arts and fine arts program, both award-winning programs. You will also see how the building itself helps with the learning by providing adjacencies to how it's all laid out. Adjacencies help with the connectivity, which helps in communication and collaboration, will help in teaching with multidisciplinary interdisciplinary teaching. And so it becomes, the building itself becomes a partner. We held forums in each of the member towns to get community input for what the community's priorities were. There were a lot of different ones, but one of the things that stood out for me was the high priority that people in all four communities placed on keeping the campus feel that we have now. It's not a box, it's not a rectangle, it is a campus. And that was a very high priority. We formed a building committee of 17 individuals across our four towns, representing school administrations, school committee, the faculty at the school, town administration, your town administrator is a member of the building committee, and members of the general public who have expertise in these types of areas and who volunteer their time. They in turn hired an owner's project manager and an architect, and the design really took off. We ended up with 13 potential design options that ranged from "don't do anything, just fix what's there, bring it up to code." There's a lot of bringing up to code to do in those buildings. And it ended up to be about $96 million was the estimated budget, this was three years ago, and we would have received no MSBA money. The second option was "tear it all down, build new." That receives some, but not the maximum, MSBA money, and it was the highest budgeted estimate at over $140 million. So our preferred design was, as Chris mentioned before, both a renovation and an addition at about $131, $132 million. And that receives the most from MSBA, the biggest percentage. And that was the design that was selected. Again, we took it out to the towns to get everybody's input. And the design that was selected was the best from both the financial aspect, in that it was the most cost-effective, and from the educational perspective, because it addressed the vision that we had. And then, the culmination of three years of work came at the end of 2019 into 2020, when we submitted our design and the project budget to MSBA, where it was reviewed and approved in February 2020, both the budget and the design. And, very importantly, they also awarded us approximately $36 million in state funding to help with the project. So all was on track, and then came March 13th, 2000, you went, oh no, you, March 213th, 2020, when all schools in Massachusetts closed. All the students were sent home, not to be seen in person again until September, and all adults, as I recall, went off into our various corners and areas of seclusion and hibernation. Town meetings were canceled, and our vote was postponed. Running then into March, or into early 2021, it was still uncertain about how town meetings would be held, and therefore, the Regional School Committee voted to hold a district-wide vote to ask the voters to approve the $132 million to fund the high school. And the voters responded overwhelmingly. We got a 70% plus voter approval. And then we were off to the races, kind of.
So let's address March 2021 to present. In that timeframe, the building design was developed into blueprints and bid documents. These documents were thoroughly reviewed by the MSBA to make sure that they met the guidelines established in their building program. During that time, we also purchased 37 mobile trailer units. They were bought in order to serve as temporary classrooms and offices while the building was under construction, almost half a school in essence. Throughout the design process, modifications were made to the design to reduce the costs of the building and the project itself without impacting the educational plan. During this time, roughly $7.3 million worth of modifications were taken out to reduce the overall cost of the design. Finally, this past June, we put the project out for bid. After seven years of work, everything was in place to go after and find a builder to construct our building. In October, on the 19th of October, we opened the bids from our general contractors. Five contractors were pre-qualified to bid on the project. We received bids from two contractors. Braith Builders being the lowest bidder at $134.4 million. The next lowest bidder was 15 million more, at $159.8 million. The low bid was 29.7 million over our estimate, the estimate that was developed three years prior. At our November meeting, upon the recommendation from the building committee, the Nauset Regional School Committee decided to go and ask the voter for the additional funds to build the school as designed. The decision was made for financial reasons, which we'll address later in the presentation, but the guiding principle to the decision was that once the taxpayers had voted to support the high school building project, it in essence was their building. They, and only they, had the right to decide if the project should go forward with a higher price tag. The current plan as designed is owned by the taxpayers. They voted for it. They voted to fund it, and they own it. So it's up to them to determine if it's worthy of paying the extra funds to build The ballot question coming to a vote on January 10th will ask the taxpayers of the four towns to authorize an additional $38.1 million in funds to pay for the high school building as designed. Let's go over these items that make up this cost increase. Additional construction costs, 29.7 million. This was determined by the bid. The low bidder on the project was 29.7 million over our estimate. Construction contingency fund, 6 million. These funds are part of every large construction project. They are the funds that are set aside to pay for unexpected expenses that pop up during construction. These expenses tend to be more prevalent when you have a renovation, as we do as part of our project. Additional soft costs in administration, 1 million. These costs include extra engineering expenses, rentals, administrative expenses, surveys, project management, and legal expenses. Next item, FF and E/IT, 815,000. This item is literally furniture, fixtures, and equipment, which includes technology. In the current market, these products have experienced, excuse me, I've lost my speech. These items have experienced a higher inflation in their cost. And so we wanted to make sure at the end of the project, we had the funds available to furnish the building and pay for the technology when the time came about. The next item is construction testing and inspection services, $125,000. Then, additional money for moving services. And finally, builders' risk insurance, $400,000. This is a cost that wasn't anticipated in the original budget. It was first thought that the contractor would carry this on their own, but the MIAA said it was better that we carried ourselves, and that is kind of the format and the norm. And so it was not in the bid documents, and therefore something that we were required to carry. So, the project revised budget is $169.9 million. This is an additional funding request of $38.1 million, as listed here. This is the total funding that the building committee requested in order to complete the project as planned. Our project manager and architect assisted in developing the figures for this additional funding. So these are the costs that make up the $38.1 million ballot request for additional funding for the Nauset High School building project. Judy?
Okay, so here's what everybody is interested in, and should be. What's it going to cost us? Okay, so we have two scenarios laid out, one for a 30-year bond and one for a 25. So let's look at the first one for the 30-year. And I want to emphasize at the beginning that these are estimates, only that. We will not actually be bonding until June. We currently have a bond anticipation note of $28 million that's funding the project right now. It comes due in June, so that's when we will be bonding the big amount. So the decision of what the term of the bond will be, and also we'll have a better idea of what the interest rate will be, will be made in May. And made in conjunction with the town administrators and the finance directors. We've always made these decisions after meeting with them, and fortunately, they have always, I think, been unanimous, so it makes our job easier, and then we go and recommend it, because the Regional School Committee is the borrower, and they will, they have to take the vote. So again, estimate. So our bond council, her best estimate, conservative of what the interest rate would be in June, May-June, is 4.65% based on a 30-year level debt bond. These calculations are based on the individual town property tax rates, as well as the town's percentage of students in the Nauset system. And that is determined every year on October 1st. That's when the state sets the numbers. And so, as of this year, well, you can see what the cost would be for Eastham, $38.38 and 42 cents per $100,000 of assessed value. And this, I should say, is not for the 38.1 million, this is for the whole thing. So we're looking at the whole, the maximum amount if we borrowed 133 million, so that's the max. And then for a 25-year bond, the interest rate would be 4.5%, and Eastham's share would be $51.70. As of this October 1st, Brewster had about 47% of the students, Eastham about 19%, Orleans 21, and Wellfleet 12.
You reversed Orleans and Eastham maybe?
No.
We're 20, we're right around 20.
So why is ours more?
Yeah.
I think your tax rates are.
Oh, the tax rate is higher than, okay.
Don't worry, I promote Orleans, we're catching up with them.
Sure, we're all catching, we're all reaching the same line, I think.
That shouldn't matter, really.
Okay, so that's what it's going to cost us. So what can we do here? What are our options? Well, we can vote to provide the additional funding or none. So let's take a look at the first option. We can vote to provide the additional $38.1 million to build the high school. Why should we do this? Well, one of the reasons is that this current plan, this design, this project that we have before us now, is eight years in the making. Literally thousands, I think tens of thousands of person hours have been invested. This is both volunteer time and people have been paid. This $28 million bond ban that we've taken out has paid a lot of people, the architects and everyone else. So we already have money invested in this. Also, the new high school as proposed is what the community selected. It was their solution of what to do with our aging high school, and it addresses our educational vision. And also.
Coming?
Coming. Two pots of money are already in play here. And a yes vote will protect the $28 million that we've already borrowed and expended and/or committed for work done to date or contracted to date. And it will also protect our $36 million MSBA grant. We will also keep our general contractor, quality general contractor, Braith Builders, who is well-known, and who is the same contractor that built Cape Tech and brought it in on time and on budget. And lastly, the reason to vote for it is there is no less expensive solution, not now and not in the future. Not a smaller school, not a different school, not any school that we can build four or five years down the road. And there are plenty of examples out there to prove this. And one is just across the water in Martha's Vineyard. In 2019, Tisbury was set to build a new elementary school at $36 million, with $14 million, these are approximate numbers, with $14 million from MSBA, with the net cost to the voters of $22 million. They voted it down, lost the $14 million, went out again with it, this time with a $50 million budget, and with no MSBA money. And when the bids came in, they came in at over 80 million. So what was going to be $22 million is now costing them over 80. I don't want this to happen, you don't want it to happen, so there is just no less expensive solution than what we have. Or we could.
Take a look at option two. So let's take a look at option two. The taxpayer could vote against providing the extra funding for the project. If the taxpayers vote against providing the additional funding for the project, in essence, the current project is dead. There isn't a Plan B. We aren't, we weren't tasked with developing two high schools, we were tasked with developing one. This is the plan before us, this is the plan that the taxpayers voted to fund construction of. There are a few key points to remember here. We've already borrowed $28 million towards this solution. We've spent or contracted roughly 21 million of those dollars. Going forward, these funds will have to be repaid. Also important to note, the 36 million MSBA grant is based on the educational plan, which is supported and represented by the current building design. If we don't build the high school as planned, we lose the 36 million in state funding. Another consequence of voting against the building project is that we lose the quality builder that is currently our low bidder, bidder. A company we know does quality work, as seen in their Cape Cod Technical High School that they just finished around exit 10. And I'm not, I wasn't really quite aware of this, but even you talk to people in the towns, having a quality low bidder is a big thing, because we're required to take the low bidder, you don't have an option. So whoever's the lowest one in, you've got to take them unless there's, you can jump through some hoops, but you really can't because the lawsuits just make it too expensive. So you have to take the low bidder. And we are so lucky that we have someone who is a quality contractor that is our low bidder. It's also important to understand that at present, we have a solution to our problem, a problem identified eight years ago. We now have a known cost for that solution, and we have a reasonable timeline to complete the project. All of this is a project that we have in mind, and we have a plan for it. All of these are important considerations. If we are to begin this process again, a new project will take four to five years to get us where we are currently. We will have lost our MSBA funding. And once again, we will be addressing an unknown cost for a solution. There can be no doubt that a project five years down the road, regardless, is gonna cost the towns and the taxpayers much more to pay for it. And remember, over those five years, we must continue to maintain the 50-old high school building that we own and use. We now also own 37 mobile trailer classrooms that will have to be maintained. Because of the age of our high school, if any major system fails and requires replacement, we could find ourselves in the position of having to bring the entire high school up to the current building code. And while this seems like an unlikely situation, be aware that two schools in the Nauset system currently find themselves struggling with this problem today. So let's just get a perspective on where we stand. We're in the eighth year of a solution to a problem. Thousands of people hours have been spent to develop the solution. 28 million dollars has already been borrowed, much of it spent towards this solution. We have 36 million dollars pledged in state funds towards the building project to help defray the cost to homeowners. That makes this a 64-million-dollar question. No one is happy that we find ourselves in this position. It is as a result of the times and the economy that we live in. Going forward and providing the additional funding for the high school building is the right thing to do. It is the right thing to do because in the end, it is a solution that undoubtedly will cost less, be completed in the quickest amount of time, and guarantee the future of quality education in the Nauset region for the next 50 years. It is for all these reasons that the Nauset Regional School Committee asks for your support and requests that you vote for the additional funding for the Nauset Regional High School Building Project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. I'm gonna start by opening it up to the select board for questions. Okay, Amy?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you. It was a great presentation. Question on the, like, amounts that you were putting out there. Initially, you said the mix of the renovation and new buildings was 132 million?
That was what we orig- I'm sorry.
The original, right.
Yes, yes.
But then you said Braith Builders came in at 134 million. So I'm wondering, does that not include the 28 million that you already spent on the trailers and things like that?
No, so you got a couple of things. The whole total building, the project cost is 160. I'd have to get back to that slide.
Well, now, right.
Yes.
But, yeah, I'm just wondering that.
Construction portion of it is what theirs is.
Okay.
That's the.
Gotcha. So that, like, the trailers weren't included in that and things like that?
No, no, no. Construction portion.
Gotcha. Okay. And then my other question on that tax rate, which we kind of.
Yes, do you want to go back to the slide?
Brought up about, it shouldn't matter, our tax rate. It should, we should have, there should be a pot of money that because of how, what percentage of students we have, we have to pay back that pot of money.
So, a couple of things here. First off, that number of students changes every year.
Well, true.
That does swap around. The, the tax rate is based on what you're currently taxing a home per 100,000. So that's what the tax, what this additional funds, what these additional.
True, but if we have fewer, say we have a lower percentage than Orleans, it shouldn't really matter what our tax rate is because we're, we have fewer students. Our amount should be less after 25 years.
If they have a higher, if they have a higher tax rate or higher number of students, they're gonna pay more.
Hold on, I think I can help. So, the, the amount, the 19% or the 20% that we are owed is one issue. And then to split it up per person, per resident, per household, that's when our tax rate comes into play.
Okay.
So it's really two separate, yeah.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Okay. We have less people.
These were estimates, I mean, just so we're clear.
Yeah, no, no, no. I got you.
Presented by our, by the bond council, which we all share, I believe.
That number makes sense now, yeah.
Same for all our towns.
I've got a couple of questions. Could you go back to the chart that broke down the additional costs?
Certainly. Give me one second here. Yes.
That's it. I'm just confused because, other than the 30 million for the additional construction costs, all these other items, I would have thought would have been in the original bid. I understand that you didn't have builder's risk and you wanted to add that. But none of those other costs were in the original bid? Or is that incremental?
They were, it's incremental. So the first part is to think about, first off, that, let's see. Must remember that the project cost now has gone up by 30 million dollars.
Got it.
So the contingency, portions of the contingency funds were also spent to acquire extra trailers one time. We, the original contract had 16 trailers in it. The original, yeah, plan was to have, use 16 trailers. We were not aware that there were these other trailers available. The school that had these, Lincoln, that had these trailers is, is, our OPM was also doing their project.
So I understand that. So the additional construction contingency funds, part of that is the additional trailers.
Well, the part of that, the contingency fund was paid for the additional trailers. That's correct. And so this is, ought to bring it back and plus a little more to offset the extra funding.
I understand that. Okay. Soft cost in administration. How come that one up?
Again, I mean, so just so we're clear, our OPM came in and thought that we should request from the taxpayer an additional 49 million dollars.
No, no, no. I'm not asking that question.
I'm just, I'm just, all right, I'm not trying to, so this was kind of a negotiated positioning. All these things are estimates. Until you, until you begin to build, you really don't know. We know what our construction costs are gonna be, but these other items.
No, I understand that. I very clearly understand that. But what I'm just saying is, some of these numbers would have been in the original bid. So these are all, these are all incremental to what was in the original bid.
That's correct. Except for the two that he mentioned.
One other question. The builder's risk insurance. You initially planned not to do that, have the builders take on that insurance. And then you've now decided that we will take on that insurance. But when you said it, you said, the first thing you said was it was recommended that we take that on. And then you said it was required that we take it on. So I'm just trying to understand, is that something that we, I mean, it may be a great idea to do it. It's not about whether it's a good idea or not. I'm trying to understand if it's a required, that we, that we pick it up? Or is it recommended that we pick it up?
Let's see. It would, it's necessary for the job, okay? In the past, it was part of the general contractors, it was in his bid. It would have been part of his bid. And it was taken out of their bid, so that cost was not in there. And it was put, we're paying for it here. It would have, if it wasn't, if we didn't have an, a additional funding opportunity, it would have been paid out by the contingency. And the reason for it is, is that in the timeframe, the development, the years this has been going on, it is, the thought has been moved that it is better for the building owner to possess that insurance policy than to have the general contractor possess that insurance policy. I have a write-up. I can forward it to you.
No, no, I'm just trying to understand. You said initially required, and then you said recommended. Now, I recommend and required. I'm just understanding. I understand that we need to have that, okay? Just understanding whether, whether it was something that we had to do and we didn't do, or now we're gonna do because it's not being done by the builder, which is what you said.
Jerry has a lot of questions.
Yes, in essence.
All right, thank you.
Jerry?
One question, well, a couple of questions, Chris. First, what's in soft cost in administration? What is it?
What is it? Soft cost in administration? So it's extra funds for, Greg, would you like to be on this? I mean, he's here.
Legal.
Greg, yeah, that's.
Legal.
Good evening.
Thank you, Greg.
So there's a couple of different ways of looking at that. So the original project, as any project has, there are two contingencies. There's a construction contingency, which is what the 5.9 million dollar represents. There's always what's called an owner's contingency, a separate pot of money that is available to the building committee to cover costs that aren't covered in all kinds of other little pots around the project. So 1 million dollars was put in the owner's contingency. The original project had 454,000 dollars in that contingency. That was used along with some of the construction contingency to pay for the extra modular classrooms, which, excuse me, allows us to have a larger footprint of classrooms available to teach the students while the rest of the campus is torn up and under construction. So most of that 1 million dollars is gonna go to fill the pot for the owner to have a cushion for the next three years. That's what you have to understand, is that this is a three-year project. And if I may, while I'm here, the 814,000 dollars for FFNE, that was boosted because the money in the budget today for FFNE is three years old. That number per student, per unit, is 1.2 million dollars. In three years, that would be a six-year-old number. So we said, if we're asking for the taxpayers for funding the project in full, we need to look at an extra money for the FFNE and the technology so that in three years, when we go buy this stuff, we'll have the money to do it, don't have to come back and ask a second time, which nobody wants to do that. So that's how you get that point. And if I may, on the insurance, if I may. The reason the insurance carrier for the district, I believe Eastham probably has the same MIA, they look at it because it's a change in thought process. When you look at the builder's risk insurance covered by the general contractor in their bid, they get to tack on their markup, which is 12 and 1/2%. So whatever they pay an insurance carrier for that policy, they're charging us that plus their 12 and 1/2%. So the MIA is looking at a way of reducing the cost to the owner, the district in this case. So they came up with this 400,000 dollars, which is a total bit bill for the whole project for three years. It's not a premium. It's not something that's gonna change over time. So that's one-time cost for the length of the project. And that's, and if we don't use the whole 400,000, then that goes back to the taxpayer. But right now, that was the premium they told us to put in the budget, and that's what we did.
Thank you very much for the clarification. And I think Jackie?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing. In case people are wondering, anyone's wondering why we spent some contingency and some other monies on the extra trailers. It was because the building committee was presented with a scenario where if we, these were available and if we purchased them, we'd have 34. We could not move kids around as much and hopefully shorten the building window to less months. Now, it's a three-year project, so we have to move kids around quite a bit of time. So anything that saves that, we thought was worth spending money on at that moment.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Jerry?
Yeah, Chris, last, what is it, two meetings ago or right around Thanksgiving, we had a, you were on a Zoom call. And talking on the trailers, you thought that getting the extra trailers would reduce the length of the project. You said, save it by, is that still?
It is possible. Until we get a builder, I mean, everything is still kind of.
Yeah, I understand.
So we will know that once the builder's on board. Just discussion that potentially, if we got to, if we could have the trailers up and running by February, that we could cut a year off the project. Which is, I mean, which is serious money, time, and also just lack of inconvenience for the kids, for the students.
Inconvenience for the kids, I understand. Let me go a little further and just kind of elaborate for me a little bit. In saving funds, you know, a month or so ago, you said that if we, the trailers now would probably help cut the time and reduce some costs. Where is that anywhere in these numbers? The potential to reduce, you don't have, you don't have the magic number. I understand you don't have a magic wand. But is, is there a possibility that having spent more contingency funds for 11 more trailers or whatever the number is, has a potential to reduce the time and maybe reduce the cost? And I don't understand the bid. Is that a solid bid or if it goes faster, the bid, the cost will be less than the bid? I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. So the thing is, is that it would be represented in the bid. The fact that, when the bid was created, realizing we were gonna have 37 trailers rather than the original 16, the bid would come in.
The bid had the 37 in it. That's, thank you.
Well, I mean, I don't, yes, in essence, it did. What it represents, you don't know, but yes.
Right, yes, yeah. The other point would be.
After this, Jerry, I am gonna go to Suzanne too, so.
Would be to ask Jackie and Rich if we can get the cost numbers on a median home in Eastham, because I think that makes sense to let our citizens know what it is. 38 dollars is, you know, what does it mean?
Per hundred.
Suzanne, sorry, thank you.
I have a number of questions, but the one that probably most pertains to this audience right now is what is the difference over time to the taxpayer based on 25-year bonding and 30-year bonding? Because I'm new to bonding.
The estimates that are there now is level debt, so it would be the same every year.
It's just a matter of paying more.
It's just a matter of. I can answer it. I just did quick math. So on a 700,000 dollar house, it would be approximately 1,000 dollars over the course of the loan. You'd save 1,000 dollars if we went with the 30, the.
25.
Yeah.
25.
25 years.
Save 1,000.
Okay. And so when does that decision be, who makes that decision? And when does that decision get made? On what?
The decision gets made in May. The school committee will make the decision after we consult with the town administrators, all four administrators and finance directors. And then we will make the decision. I will also say, our bond council tells us that the bond will be written, if that's the right term, so that after eight years, should interest rates go down again, hopefully, it'd be nice. Although I'm old enough where I remember they were a lot higher than this when I bought my first house. We can refinance the bond after eight years. So should they go back down to the 2 and 1/2% then, then we could do that then? And then that would obviously change the terms.
So it is. And we usually, you know, the school committee usually allows us to meet. They present us with the scenarios. And then, generally speaking, I have to be honest with you, we defer to Brewster because they have the lion's share of it. So, you know, I think the smaller communities are more amenable to the 25-year, the 20-year bonds. And sometimes Brewster agrees with us and sometimes they don't. But we defer to them because they have the largest chunk.
Right, makes sense.
I have like a whole other laundry list of questions that range from like more money from the state, school choice, P-Town, and TruRus.
No, I don't think we're going, I think we're keeping it.
Elections. And I didn't know when those questions would be good.
I can touch base on one that I think is probably pertinent.
Yeah, I think a lot of those are.
We have attempted to request additional funding. So first off, there's been discussion with the MSBA provided. And I think that is highly unlikely. And just in that, they have a tax source and their goal is to try to get as many schools built as possible. And they're pretty tight with their money and they're very tight on their percentages, what they will pay for and what they won't pay for. I just, they're tight with a buck. I would not expect money coming, more additional funds coming from them. Although they are aware of the problems that are going on and they've paused some of their programs as a result of it, and they're making adjustments. But still, I don't see them opening their wallets. But we have reached out to the state, to our local reps, as well as legislature, head of legislature, the House and the Senate, as well as our associations, and have requested, you know, let them know the condition that we're in. They have provided additional funds for libraries in the states that found themselves in the same position. So we are hopeful that there is a potential that we might be able to get additional funding. Also, since they have, their pockets are deep right now, they've got a lot of money, you know, left over from the COVID money. So they still have money. So we're hopeful that we may get money from them at some point. It will not impact this vote, though. We will not get it, you know, prior to the.
January 10th.
But we, but it is out there and there is hope. And at least our two reps, Julie and Sarah, and Sarah Peake have both thought that it was a possibility.
Suzanne, if it's okay with you, because I know that the finance committee has a lot of questions too. And then I can, I can always circle back if there's something that you think is like extremely pertinent, you know? That way, everybody kind of gets in. Is that okay with you?
No, I understand. I have like a laundry list of questions.
Okay. Great. And some, yeah, okay.
By all means, ask more questions.
All right, so I'm going to, if everyone's okay on the board, I'm going to turn it over to see if anyone on the finance committee had some questions, which I'm sure you do.
Do any of you have questions? Roy?
Roy, okay.
Right now, I'm just rounding here. It looks like with the approval of the 38 million, we'll have a $170 million budget in total. What percent is allocated to contingency of that 170 million dollar budget?
I don't have the exact calculation at this point.
7 point something million. So I don't know, you'd have to do the math. But the total contingency is 7 point something with this plus what we have now. Right, Greg, it's roughly in that range. Oh, he knows the exact figures.
Oh, yeah.
Math is a great thing. So we have to understand that of the 170 million you talked about, the only part you have a contingency on is the construction part.
Right.
Okay, the construction part is the $138 million. So 138, that's how we come up with the $6 million construction contingency for the rest of the project moving forward. The modulars are done, they're paid for, they're all installed. And so the only contingency we need was for the construction moving forward. So that $6 million is whatever percent of the 134.
134, okay, thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much.
In reading some of the information that was sent out, it was mentioned that, I guess in going through the value engineering process, you took out 7.3 million from the original budget. Now, has that, is that back in 170?
I mean, just so you understand the process, we worked hard not to put anything back in. There was some, you know, we were going to ask the voters for more money, we should put this and all that. And it was like, no, we can't do that. So none of those items were back in, were placed back in, nothing extra. We had a design, that was the design we had, the bid came in, it was more. These are the funds that you're seeing here, or exactly, there was no design change in that process. So this is, these are exactly the funds that we were asking. I'm sorry, I don't have that sheet up, but.
As far as break builders, their bid, how is the bid review? What's the process for that?
So there are, there are bid documents that are sent out online, and we have those five. So the bids actually, until we have the funding for it and we accept the bid, that's when everything gets reviewed and gone through. At this point in time, that is not done. So the first two weeks, I believe, is when that occurs. After, if we have the funding, finalize the contract with them.
But we have done due diligence to make sure that they met all the criteria of the bid. That's already done. And I need to mention too, on a project this size, the state of Massachusetts requires that builders pre-qualify. So a year ago, there was a process where, or maybe less than a year ago, but six months ago, where all of the potential bidders had to pre-qualify, show that they were financially stable, show that they had done like projects. So that all occurred prior to this. And there were five, five companies in Massachusetts that qualified to bid on this project. So it's a small pool of builders that have the capacity to do a project like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else on finance would like to?
Rick?
Yeah, I've got a couple. The, how much is the extra trailers? What's the total?
We need Greg for that.
We need Greg for that.
Greg's getting his steps in tonight.
So the original budget, project budget, we had set aside $3 million for modular classrooms, what the professionals call swing space, someplace you can put the students under construction. That was for 16 units. It wasn't until after we had got the money in March 2021 that we actually went up to Lincoln and saw that they actually had 37 units. So the question then became, why don't we just do the 37 units, which gives our bigger footprint? More students get moved out of the buildings, more buildings get torn up and renovated and rebuilt and all the one fell swoop, which is why we went for that. So we took the $3 million and we took $2.5 million out of the contingency, which was $5.4 million, and bought the trailers and had them dismantled, moved from Lincoln, Massachusetts to Cape Cod. You probably saw some on the news once or twice, and different.
Take corners.
Different incidents. And they were installed at the high school in a different configuration because Lincoln's site was a flat ball field right in the middle of the school campus. When we got to Nauset, we had to flip them around because we couldn't get past Queen Anne Road, which is our neighbor. So they were flipped around so they would fit on our site, which was part of the bid process of $5 million to get them installed and ready to go in hopefully a month or so. That answers the question.
Okay, so that's a big percentage of what the contingency was.
About half of us.
There wasn't an assumption that you would pay for them by part of the 7.3 million? The 7.3 million of cost reductions?
The $7.3 million of cost reduction. So let me explain what's a VE process is like. It's called value engineering. So at one point, we had lots of finished ceilings in the campus. So we took those out as the project cost started to creep upwards. So we had things built into the whole design originally, where as we removed things, it would keep the construction budget where, within our original budget. The original cost, construction budget was $1.4 million. So we had to stay with that number because we have three, we have commitments to MSBA. We have to stay on that original construction document. So that's why we kept moving things around. As I said to you, at one point, one of the meetings, we had, for a while, we had a lot of epoxy flooring. That went through the roof, we took that out. We put a flooring material that was less expensive. Well, guess what? Six months later, that new flooring materials were expensive and the epoxy flooring was cheaper again. So we put the epoxy back in. So it's a back, back and forth. So what you're looking at is a way of keeping the same project with different finishes, different materials that still let you, let us, allowed us to keep the project moving forward until we had the construction bids from the general contractors. That's what threw things out of whack.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
The tax number implications that were put up there. What was the, when you say originally got approved for Eastham, what was the tax assumption and the impact on?
Well, it was, first of all, it was based on a 25-year level principal, not level debt. So you're not, it's a little bit of apples and oranges there. And I don't know unless Chris can come up with a.
But it would have changed every year, is what you're telling me?
It would have changed, yes. It was higher, higher in the beginning.
And the dollars you had up there, the 51 and the 38, are those only for bonding that would happen in May? Does that, and excludes what we're already on hook for, for the 28 million of bonding that's already happened?
No, no, it's the total project. Bonding for the total project. And is, normally they wouldn't bond for the entire project, normally they'd only bond for a portion of it and leave a section, 5 million or so later. We were requested to provide numbers that represented the entire project, and that's what we did.
What was the interest rate on the original assumption?
2.4.
I think it was a little higher.
2.45, I do have that.
And that's the big difference.
2.46.
So, so we got a big impact from the interest rate. We got an impact because the town's portion of this has gone up 40%, right? You take, you just hold the, what the state's giving us over here, what we, what we're on hook for, for all the towns.
Oh, I see.
Went from 96 to 134, 40% increase, right?
Oh, okay, so we're saying, yep.
So that, from a town's point of view of what we're on the hook for, it's a 40% increase. You know, some of the increases is, are we assuming that this project's going to take longer than we thought it was going to take when we did the original estimate?
I don't think so.
No.
That's what I'm hearing, yeah.
So it's not, so it's the increased inflation that's killing us, not that we didn't know it was going to be six years before some of this stuff hit. We had whatever inflation assumption in here.
Yeah.
2%, 3% a year instead of what it.
Yes, yeah.
Turns out to be. Okay.
We're also a year behind because we lost a year in the, in getting the vote. And so it would have happened a year sooner, so the budget was made. And it wouldn't be three years later that we would do, we're doing this, so.
Numbers would have been fresher. I mean, so estimates would have been probably closer to being accurate. Plus COVID just threw estimates out the roof.
Yeah.
Understand. And it's the same reason, what it also did was impact our fixed income taxpayers who are going to be asked to pay for this, not a 40% increase, but a 40% plus the interest rate impact. It's a big increase. That's it.
Thank you.
Tom?
All right, Thomas Gardner?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Tom, go ahead. You go first.
We have two Tom's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I partner. I think, I think your hand was up first, so.
Okay, just real quick.
Okay.
So based on what Rick was just saying, then, can we identify, based on the current project that was $132 million, what the impact to the Eastham, the average Eastham taxpayer was going to be? And what it's going to be now if we approve this additional $38 million, the $170 million budget?
Again, we don't have, we don't have it as a level debt. That scenario wasn't run for the original amount, so I can't compare that. We have it, yes, at level debt. So if you, you don't have it?
And honestly, Tom, you're really, you're approving the difference, but you're really approving the whole thing. Because we've only borrowed 28 million, right? So, and that was a ban, that wasn't a bond. So we're going to have to roll that into, to whatever amount it is, whether it was the 131 or this amount.
But when you approved the original project, I thought in somewhere in the discussions there was, this is going to cost the average homeowner about.
There was, it was an estimate, and I think it was based on like 2.7%. I can see if I can find it for you, because I might have.
I have.
I have the number, I can give you the number for Orleans, because I, I wrote it down and I just didn't update it.
Because I think that's what the Eastham taxpayers are going to want to know. So what, if it was going to, if it was going to cost me this much a year, now what's it going to cost me by adding this extra amount?
So what, the number that we had before for Orleans, based on 2.46% level principal, was $30.99 per 100,000, so $31. And now it's $40.38, so it's $9 difference per 100,000.
Trouble with that is that you're looking, I mean, you're not comparing apples to apples. You're comparing different nodes, different timeframes, different, you know.
But that's what went out to the taxpayer.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, it isn't.
But I appreciate your question, Tom, because I think what you're asking is, you know, with 70% passing on the prior vote, people clearly were in favor of this project. So now I think the people voting now are just curious. Okay, so I was obviously in favor of this project. What extra amount am I now, you know, choosing to be, to vote for, you know?
If we go with Rich's math, it's 40% more. So that would be $60, maybe.
60, is that what you're estimating?
On mine, yeah. I did my math, yeah.
Okay, so for your home, around 60. So if your average, like your, like 600 to 700,000 dollar home-ish, approximately $60 per year addition to what?
$106 more.
$106.
So one of the reasons we didn't head down that road was because in turn, in this past year, you've seen a big inflation in property values. And so it just became a.
Yeah.
We could use this, if we used the same numbers before, the property values aren't the same. We knew it.
That's true.
COVID has created havoc on all sorts of things.
It's hard to state a number and then feel locked into it too when things are changing so rapidly.
So that's why we decided to present it as to 100,000, and then you could go from there, so.
So are we going to tee this up as the increased cost, whatever it is? Is 100% fall through to the taxpayer? Or is a portion of it, we're going to offset by finding things of less priority and moving the money over without impacting the tax rate?
What?
Like free cash, you mean, or some other?
Like what could we do that would create a 38.1 million dollar?
You couldn't, but maybe you can find five of it. Maybe you can find, I don't know. I'm just saying, you know, at some point, the taxpayer, you know.
Yep.
You know, the, especially the fixed income taxpayer who.
We're all fixed income, right?
Who is chasing a number, and their number they're chasing is their fixed income.
Yeah, I mean, everyone's had a limit on their income. So I do think, you know, when you say fixed, I think.
Right. So this isn't, you know, this isn't.
Can't pay more than I make.
$10 bucks and 10 or 20 bucks, it's significant.
Do you have any more questions, Tom?
Okay, so Tom McManus.
The advantage of going last is a lot of my questions have been answered. So that's great. You've both done a great job tonight. Thanks so much for answering those. Got a couple of quick ones for you. First of all, is this school, how long do we think it's going to last? You know, is it 50 years? Is it 75 years? You know, new building materials, et cetera, that have come along? You know, is there anything positive we could tell the taxpayer?
I would anticipate it to last 50 years. I don't know if there's any, I mean, I don't think there's any authority you're going to get any more than that from.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Second question is with respect to the contractor break, and maybe you've already done this in your bidding process. Is there any incentives for them to finish early financially? Or, you know, in other words, if they come under, they share in the under run? Or do they get all of it? If they go over, they share in the overrun, but on a different, I've seen that in contracting in government before.
Yes.
It's worked very positively.
And we had that option, the contractor risk option. But ultimately, we chose not to do it because it's just, there's a risk. I mean, there's a huge risk. So it didn't seem like a good risk to take at the time. Now, maybe in hindsight, it would be, but I don't think so.
Okay, all right. You did consider it.
We definitely did several, twice, at least twice.
We talked about it. A discussion with the town, all the town officials, to see if that was something you wanted to do. And it was, it was about a 5 million additional cost to the project at the time. And that was why it was determined it was best not to do it.
Okay, all right. And then the last one I got is we talked about the trailers a lot. Is there any residual value of these trailers we expect to recoup at the end?
They will be sold when they're done. And yes, they, but they're not going to be, it'll be in the 500, 500,000.
In that range, okay. So it's not like we spent seven, we're going to get a million back.
Inflation will go up, so maybe a little more than that, but.
They're in great shape.
They are. And actually, we would, as soon as construction ends on them, we'll have tours. I mean, it's, I was in there the other day. It is unbelievable how, I mean, it's.
I've seen a lot of places that have made the trailers permanent pots, even after they've done the modification.
We did that last time, so.
But I didn't know if there was some significant residual that might be a benefit to the taxpayer to hear.
Although the towns have been, we've had requests from various towns that when you're done, we would like them for this and for that, so.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
And I just have a question, as Tom said, a number of the questions I had have already been answered. And that last one on the trailers, I was thinking if we bought them for five, if we could get them for five, we can reduce the cost by five, 5 million. You said you, you've paid 5 million for the trailers.
So no, I'm sorry, we.
You're not planning on getting 5 million back by selling them?
The money, the, most of the money spent on the trailers is actually the installs. So you've got to put foundations in, you've got to provide plumbing, water, electrical, transformers.
Septic.
Septic, I mean, it gets, it's, that's where the expense is. So that you can't transfer anywhere else. It's just the trailers that are your asset that you can sell in the end. And so that ends up roughly being a half a million dollars. And hopefully, I mean, we'll see where we're at, but hopefully more. It was considerably cheaper to buy them used than it would be to have bought them new. And it wouldn't have been available, I mean, so kind of thing. So, you know, the other side is, is, think of the time we've seen, you know, it's taken roughly. So, you know, the other side is, is, think of the time we've seen, you know, it's taken roughly eight months to get the trailers out and in place. But as a result of all that being done, potentially if we get the funding on January 10th, we can begin construction in February. Whereas without that, if we had to buy the trailers, get them in place, we'd be starting eight months later down the road. So it's...
In some ways...
It'd save us a considerable amount of time and money at this point.
And I have another question.
Yes.
At the present time, the students from Provincetown and Truro are not involved with, those towns aren't involved with the four that we're talking about today. It's my understanding they're, they just pay a tuition and they don't, aren't involved with, helping out with the capital cost of this project. What sort of conversations have you had about that?
So we haven't had conversation yet because they're under a tuition agreement at present.
I realize that.
When they came in, to be honest with you, when we negotiated, I was there, negotiated this one, we were pretty happy that they were willing to continue with us while we were going to be under construction, at least thought we were going to begin right away, but we were going to be under construction. And so that current contract is what represents that. Where there will be a negotiation at the end, I believe, it ends after next year.
Coming soon.
Yeah, and we have another negotiation. And the whole point this is, is, you know, the cost of educating a child in the NOSIT system that the towns pay is going to have to be the same cost that a, uh, Truro and P-Town pay for bringing their students here. I mean, it's, and capital is part of that. But the point is, we had a 50-year-old building and really no capital costs prior. Now we're going to have a brand-new building and capital costs involved, and so it will have to be a part of what they pay.
But in all fairness, they are paying more than the average student coming in for school choice.
Oh, I agree, there's a big difference here a bunch of times.
A significant amount more they've agreed to pay. So it's not like the towns of Truro and Provincetown, they understand that, I think, and I'm not, you know, trying to advocate for them, but I think they understand that they want NOSIT to be their school, and so they have contributed a good 10, 11,000 more per student than other school choice kids do because of that, so...
A lot more than that.
20,000, they paid 20,000 to students.
Yeah, so it's not, my understanding, they pay about 20, and school choice is 5, so, but that's...
They, they not only pay 20, but the two big costs that they pay on top of the tuition is transportation. We do not provide transportation, and that's a big ticket item for the school. So there are no buses going up there, they provide that. They also pay for any special education costs on top of that tuition. So it's 21,000 plus that they take on, and...
And let's touch base on just one other point, just since it's up.
Thanks, Judy.
When we last talked with Truro and P-Town, we asked them if they wanted to join the NOSIT system, you know, if you wanted to begin that process, they had no interest whatsoever. So again, that was a 50-year-old school at that point in time, or whatever. When they beginning to have to pay the cost of education with a new building, maybe that will be different, I don't know. But they had no interest at that point in time of joining us, and there's no way we can force them to join us, so...
I'd also like to say that, because I know this has come up a lot, about having Truro and P-Town join the district. And of course, it's not just our decision, obviously, it's theirs also. But having them, we already have the second most complex school district in the state. Our elementary schools are not regionalized. So we have four towns, five school districts, six school committees, with 30 people on the regionals, on the joint, the joint school committee. And we have one administration. If we brought two other towns into this configuration, without regionalizing the, the elementary schools, I believe we would have, we will hit a tipping point. So the central...
On administration.
On the administration, the central office would have to be, the staff would have to be beefed up a lot. I'm sure we'd have to get an assistant superintendent, I mean, we already spread 30 miles from end to end. Then we'd be ending, adding another 20 miles onto it. So every, every, you know, from the special, the student services person, to the director of curriculum, to the IT people, to the finance people, that's a lot to cover. So you would definitely have significant additional costs in administration and no place to put them. So now we'd be talking about putting a...
Stop, Judy, it's a nightmare, stop.
This is what keeps Judy up at night.
While it sounds good, it's, there are a lot of moving parts there that would have to be considered.
Well, we'll have 37 trailers when...
Exactly.
Sure, they'd love that.
We'll give them a discount if they'll take all the classes in there.
Could become the new community center.
There we go.
No, that, thank you so much, because I think you've put a lot of things in perspective and given us a lot to digest as far as the process that's gone into getting to where we are now, and that was really helpful. I'm going to see if there are any other questions before I...
Are there any other questions here?
Finance committee's all set, select board? Uh-oh, Suzanne.
Just say quickly, I know the mailers already went out for vote by mail.
Yeah, you just...
Okay, I did just get that one.
Saw the box upstairs already, so people are turning their ballots in already.
Yeah, so maybe we can even broadcast this meeting, rebroadcast it on Facebook and places, that way more people can get some information. Yeah, that would be helpful for people.
Yeah, the two, two things, one, can we, normally you have a town meeting and there's a warrant, we say things. I mean, is there a possibility we can say to the citizens, whatever, can we have that time? That's one, and number two, I voted already, so I won't tell you how, but I voted already, and there is potentially some confusion that I, people can be confused to just try and explain the vote. There are two separate elections. And if you're going to do vote by mail, you're going to get two brown envelopes and two ballots. One is for the NOSIT school, and that is a yellow strip across the top, and your brown envelope has a yellow address, if you're in Eastham, it has a yellow address sticker. So you vote, sign that brown envelope, and stick the yellow ballot in that. There is a town vote to...
Approve the funds.
A debt exclusion for the amount of money that Eastham owes, that's a separate election, and across the top, it's orange. And your brown envelope has a white address sticker on it with a little highlighter that's orange. You fill that one out and you stick that one into the orange envelope and sign both.
I can make a video tonight.
We're going to do a TikTok.
We're going to do a video, and I will send it to Kayla, who, because now we have this wonderful resource that can help us share information, and we'll get it done tonight, so that that information will be accessed by folks immediately.
Yeah, because you want, you want your vote to count. You don't want to have it messed up, that you didn't sign this or whatever, and it can't count. So you want, you want to do it correctly.
You don't want to put the orange and the yellow.
So basically, we will just...
Orange and yellow, yes.
A video of the how-to vote, like, process, okay? And Suzanne?
So in the same vein, um, thank you for explaining the why, the two ballots. I know why there's two ballots, but you're going to always need to explain to people why there are two ballots, and any, any information that we can push out about why there's two would be great. I asked you this, Jackie, already, but I'm going to ask it again, so other people can benefit from the question, and the answer is, why is the cost not listed on the ballot? And then I have a, what, what happens if there is a yes to the district but fails at the town?
That would be very bad.
Yes.
So if it's a yes to the district and a no to the override, then that additional amount of money would have to come out of our operating budget.
Ouch, okay. And then...
Or we would have to go back to the voters.
Okay, and then, that was such a simple answer, I love that, okay.
It's not simple, but it sounds simple.
Oh, no, it would be, it would be terrifying. It would be terrible, no, I know, but they're like...
Terrible is a good term.
And then why is the cost not listed on the ballot?
It never is, legally it never is. It is usually in the warrant article or in the explanation, but it is never on the actual ballot. But we are not, we are legally required to stay under the limit of what the original vote was. So the town meeting vote was a certain amount of money, and we're legally required to stay under that unless you vote yes on this next ballot.
And then is this one bound by the contract that's in place for the amount?
Yes. We would like to be able to sign that contract, yes.
Right, because I think there was some concern that, like, no, no number was listed, so that there was no...
No, and the contractor, the vendor has, has agreed to hold their bid for 90 days.
Which is unusual, right? Usually 30, only 30 days.
I think that's an important detail for people to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is the price, this is the price.
The price goes away.
After 90 days, and the fact they're willing to hold it for 90 days is...
Well, I think they knew that we couldn't get a vote.
Yeah.
In 30 days, there would be no way.
And I think on both sides, it takes an enormous amount of resources to, to even put in a bid of this magnitude. So they are also now invested.
And having had experience down here, I think they also understand what it takes.
Yes.
So they feel like they're prepared, they're able, you know, to bid more. I mean, they were 15 million lower than the next bidder. So they feel much, they feel comfortable in their ability to do the project, which is a good thing, I believe.
Chris, can I ask you one question? Is there any videos out there right now that we could share on our town page that, you know, where informational or informational websites or anything that we could direct people to?
We, the forums, I mean, you could, we have held forums that you could do, which could be, which is just, in essence...
It's the same.
This is basically what we're doing now, okay, so the best thing is...
The same presentation is being done.
Okay, is to share this presentation tonight.
We've been advertising these, I mean, so all our advertisements have advertised this presentation as one of the seven presentations we're doing in the various towns, as well as with the forums. So there were seven opportunities for citizens from all the towns to be able to sign on and, and...
There's, there's also, the, there's a fact sheet out there that has much of the same...
Information.
I believe you all have, but I can get it.
And there's a flyer that we've been handing out, and we'll do so more after the first of the year, right before the vote. So, and, but it's, it's the same, I mean, we'll send this presentation, you can have the presentation.
Are we able to take this, the presentation slides and put it on our website?
Well, when we post, I think when we post the meeting, it shows in that, the, when they do our meetings.
Yeah, the vote's happening now, so you got to get stuff, the flyer has to be out, that should be out now.
First of the year.
Well, the flyer, I mean, is out, it's very difficult to get it out, I mean, but the flyer is out there. We've put it out on Parents' Square, we've put it in as many places, it should be on the town, town site, it's on the school buildings website, it's on the building committees, but I mean, it's, it's everywhere that we can get it. Outreach is difficult, I mean, I, and that's why we...
I understand.
We held these forums and, and we've got it listed there, I mean, if there's someplace you can think of that we can put it, I will actually put it on the community pages, on the, in the various towns, if you like, we can get that done. You know, the fact sheet, as well as the frequently asked questions.
Yeah, one stuff is shared on our town page, usually the community page is picking up.
Yeah, exactly, so we'll put it on the town Facebook page, you can reshare this meeting to multiple times on Channel 18, too. So those will be two big things, for sure.
Should we get the flyer in, in paper form? A large, large number of people that live in town here aren't computer savvy.
What about the library or different places?
Yes, at the library.
Like just a paper flyer in the newsroom?
I mean, the people could pick up at the library.
Yes, yes. Sure. Council on Aging. Sure.
We talked about doing a presentation at the Council on Aging, there was a whole discussion. I had, forget the woman's name, but she had been in contact. I said, you set a date, we'll come, so would love to, and I, but I appreciate what you're saying. Everything so much is being done by technology these days, there is kind of a barrier to getting the communication out to people. And if you're, if you're emailing it to them, and they don't email, it's, no one's, no good. So we can get you printed forms, yeah.
Great.
When will the video of this meeting be posted?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, so it'll be up there tomorrow.
One question about the, it's, it's a simple majority on both of these, but the district-wide vote is district-wide simple majority of who turns out.
Right.
Correct, yep.
And then the other ones are town by town, as far as our borrowing, which you don't care about, really.
They don't have to worry about it.
We want you to be happy.
Yes, yes.
We would need to have it pass on one and not pass in the town, and there'd be all sorts of financial chaos in the town. It just, that wouldn't be very good for anyone.
No, exactly.
We're all trying to do the right thing.
Is ours a simple majority for the town?
Yes, yes.
The town's simple majority and the district's?
And the district's a simple majority.
Both votes are simple majority, right.
Okay. Well, I think we've got a lot of information, yeah. I'm going to ask if the finance committee wanted to...
I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Tom, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five to zero.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you very much for being here.
And thank you for your commitment to this project.
Six to zero.
Thank you very much for inviting us.
Yeah, thank you.
It's great, John.
Important stuff.
Thank you for your support.
We're not doing public comment at this, yeah, this is just a public presentation. There's no, there's no public comment tonight, tonight was just a joint meeting with finance and select board. I think, do you have like an email for questions or resource?
Well, email, we...
Yeah, okay, so... For public comment?
Yeah.
I think those go directly through...
We've had, we've had two community forums.
Yeah, the, it's a community comment forum setting that they do those in.
Thanks for coming.
Because you didn't take questions in Rooster either. Not to the public, she was never addressing the public.
The way it came across, we were on that meeting, in fact. It was to the committee people, wasn't it?
I'm going to use my gavel.
Yeah, you're going to use your gavel.
Okay, we still have a meeting going on, so I'm going to just ask for folks if you have a conversation to take it outside the room. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to licensing, shifting gears. We have renewal of common vicular licenses. We have Eastham Elementary School, NOSIT Regional High School, Inn at the Oaks, 4295 Eastham Corp. Doing Businesses Fairway, 4295 Eastham Corp. Doing Businesses Hole-in-One, Eastham Council on Aging, and the Scarlet Truck.
I'll make a motion to renew the common vicular licenses as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in fa... Oh, oh, yeah, go ahead.
There's an, there's an error on the paperwork for Fairway Restaurant and Hole-in-One. They flipped the capacities, the maximum capacity on them. So it says Fairway's capacity is 15 and Hole-in-One is 10, is 100. So everything else is right the way it's, it's set, but there's a mistake.
Okay.
And that's on the common vic.
Yeah, on the common vic for vote for those.
Can we continue to vote with a contingency that those...
You can vote and we'll change them.
Yep, okay, so the contingent.
That's, that's the only thing, just, just to correct, and it's just an error. Everything else, Hole-in-One is there, everything except for the wrong maximum capacity.
Okay, thank you for catching that. So we will modify the motion to include a contingency that the capacities be corrected on Fairway and Hole-in-One.
Correct.
And I'll need a new second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, none. Next is renewal of all alcohol on-premises liquor license for 4295 Eastham Corp. Doing Businesses Fairway.
So moved.
And is that, do we need to adjust the capacity there, too?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, that one's correct.
I didn't see it there, let me look on the...
Just check it.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Vehicles, we're trying to find it, I, I, I think it was fine, because it would have caught my eyes.
All right, so...
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Renewal of annual entertainment license for the Eastham Council on Aging.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Renewal of used auto dealership license, Connor's Car Care, Inc., and Advance Equipment.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, um, next... Okay, we have a one-day liquor license application from Willie's World Wellness Center Conference. This is... This is, the reason is that there's a request for a members' holiday party in which alcohol would be served out of the restricted.
Out of the designated.
Out of the designated areas. But I don't see any submission showing where, that like, will that include the entire?
If, if you vote that, yes.
Yeah, I think it's.
So, she didn't ask for anything?
It's not during regular business hours, so it's.
After hours?
I think it is.
Six to ten P.M.
Six to ten, okay, and did she describe when, I mean, where?
No, it doesn't say where, it doesn't confirm about police detail.
She wouldn't need a police detail if.
Yeah, it's not like it's a, you know, some sort of concert or event that.
So, she doesn't give any.
Right here, it says it though, that, it says, "The holder of a one-day special license must comply with all alcohol storage requirements."
Like, we, we can decide if they need a police detail. We don't do indoor police details.
Okay.
It's usually for an outdoor event.
I see what it is, okay, I guess, I guess I'm just.
I wish she had given us some description.
Of where, not like in the locker rooms and pool or.
In the pool, drunk in the pool, alright.
I mean, I'm reluctant without some type of boundaries as to what this event will entail. I mean, it's a huge building, there's a lot of places you could go, and I'm, I don't feel comfortable with this application as it stands.
You can restrict it.
What would you like, what can we restrict it to?
Like the main floor only?
The upper.
The kitchen, yeah, main floor, upper.
I make a recommendation, we approve this restricting the party to the main floor of the building.
Not including courts.
Well, there aren't courts on the main.
Amy, second it.
I'll second, oh, Amy seconded it?
Amy, second it.
Discussion, just, yeah, that, I mean, that's a pretty limited area.
Yeah.
There's the, there's the, like, the studios up there.
The kitchen.
And the bar, and the, yeah, the little seating area, and the bathrooms, and the, and the pool table, that, that's really it.
Yep. I understand, I guess I just, I feel reluctant because of past history of issues with events in this space.
And vote no, Jamie, okay? Vote no, I mean, every time we come up, we have an issue with her, we've now restricted it to one area. If you don't agree with it, just vote no, and we ask for votes, ayes and nays.
I'm just explaining why.
Well, I understand why you wrote explain it.
And I think it's important for people to know, and if someone has a history of having issues with alcohol on-site, the board needs to consider that, and in addition, the person that's putting in an application might want to consider that as well so that when they do put in an application, it is extremely thorough and reassuring to the board. And I like to be transparent as to why I'm doing that, so that's why I'm speaking. I can call the vote if there's no other comment.
I, I guess I would've won, I also wondered what areas she had planned on using, and I hope that our decision is acceptable to her, I guess, because.
Well, it's a contingency, so if she doesn't want to do that, I guess. And it's also, it's not all alcohol, it's just wine and beer.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I support restricting it to.
Yep.
One floor and.
So, alright, okay, is there any other comments or questions? Okay, then I'm going to call the vote individually then, so Art?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
And I'll be no. Alright, moving forward, administrative matters, I'm going to, we have one add to the agenda. We have a request with county ARPA funds to access those for wastewater and capital planning, I believe.
So, basically, Rich and I have put in an application to access those county ARPA funds, which were the funds that were set aside just for East T.M., but we just haven't been able to get our mitts on that money yet. And so, we've done a formal application and we just want, I signed the application, I just wanted to make sure that you knew and that you voted in favor of it, just in case we get a question from the county when we're going through the authorization process.
So.
Motion?
Motion, yep.
To approve the ARPA funds.
ARPA funds for capital use.
Capital plan, and then specifically we identified wastewater and water as specific projects that were obviously on the capital plan, but it was for the capital.
Very specifically, if you want to even get a more minute, ninety-two thousand dollars of it was to continue testing and funding for wastewater planning for this year.
So, how specific?
I almost had it and then I was like.
Just capital, just capital planning.
Yeah, you don't need an amount.
Motion to approve expenditure of ARPA funds for capital.
Yep, perfect.
Second. Is that sufficient?
Call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Alright, so next is town meeting, continue discussion of possible locations and/or dates.
So, I've roamed around and I think we've pretty much tried to settle on the same football field that we have used in prior years. So, the Nossett High School football field is available, there is a path to it, and there will be some adjacent parking, we're not sure, okay, so depending on how the school votes, and then the contractor will come in and set up a mobilization area, so we're not sure, but we're sure that the football field will be accessible, and the tennis court area will be accessible. So, we know we can get to the football field, so we'd like to settle on outside at the Nossett High School field for our planning purposes, and I had Lori take a look at tents, heated tents, all kinds of options. We can get tents, but the fire chief will not let us heat them. As he's afraid we'll light fire to someone.
Blankets for everybody.
Yeah, so, so as Lori pointed out, if it's a sunny day, it might be better to be outside of the tent, so, you know, it's all gonna be, but we're gonna try and work out the logistics in a place that we know and understand and have done it before. I thought that would be a little less stressful.
This would be a moot point if the school doesn't pass, right? There's no, has, there's, has there any interior construction been started at the school?
They've moved all kinds of stuff, but maybe, I mean.
They still have basketball games.
Yeah, so there's still.
So, the gym's still, the gym's still available?
Open for basketball.
Okay.
And we will have a warrant article so that potentially down the road, we could hold town meeting outside of the bounds of the town of East.
Yeah. We'll add that to this year.
For future years.
Because the drive-in really sounded like an exciting place to have town meeting, because they can put everything up on the screen, and they were very excited about it.
Corn and soda, open the concession stand, make some money.
And bathrooms and a concession stand, it would be awesome.
This would be great.
Okay.
Even sell, sell beer and wine.
Yeah, exactly. We could get a one-day liquor license.
Not if I'm here.
We could, we could, big party.
There we go.
I think it should be B.Y.O.B., okay.
Could be one heck of a town meeting, yeah.
Anyway, so the big issue now is the date.
Do we want it May at the football field?
So, it, it needs to be May, because it needs to be before the election. So, what are our two possible dates, Lori, help me.
May sixth and May thirteenth are the Saturday.
May sixth or May thirteenth, and we have to do the Saturday again, which I know people didn't like, but that was in June. I think May Saturdays are better than June Saturdays.
And have Sunday as a continued, rain date?
Yeah, or.
The sixth then?
Sixth or the thirteenth.
So, you don't have the rain day be Mother's Day?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care, mine's dead, so.
Okay, that's savage.
Sorry. And I don't have children.
Um, I didn't think of Mother's Day being on the fourteenth.
Okay.
So, maybe, maybe we do that.
The sixth then.
The sixth, okay, okay. The average temperature on May sixth is about fifty degrees.
Yeah, I was hoping for like later.
Right, for warmer.
But I don't think people are gonna be happy about a rain day.
It's okay, it doesn't change that much between May sixth and May, no.
We have a, I mean, people were in shorts today around town, so.
Today?
Yes, yes, I will entertain a complaint.
I'm in cashmere.
People in white coats following up?
Alright, we don't need to vote on that. Next, draft town meeting schedule, that is in.
Information.
Just wanna give it to you again. Just have it, okay.
Is that just scheduling?
It, it's just a draft of the schedule leading up to town meeting.
We keep, we keep sending that to you.
They keep it in here to remind us of things, like, by the way, you have this coming up, or by the way, this is happening.
Like, we'll open the warrant next, next meeting?
Next meeting. Alright, are there any questions, or I don't think so on the draft? Next, we get into committee resignations from the sixteen fifty-one Forest Advisory Committee, Janet Benjamins.
I make a motion, we accept the resignation of Janet Benjamin from the sixteen fifty-one Forest Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Committee appointments, Visitor Tourism and Promotion Services Board, Catherine Paradise, I was in the interview, she was phenomenal. She was familiar with the board, familiar with, you know, been to the meetings, knows the chair, just a great candidate, and really excited to be involved. And here, which we were finding was a little bit of an issue with some of the members, that sometimes they are not always here for the meetings all year, so.
Is that your, is that a motion, or?
Sure, yeah, we need to, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Committee assignments and appointments, so this is informational only, we don't need to vote. Community Preservation Committee assigned Joanne Buffington as clerk. Finance Committee appointed Diane Matfelp to the Search Committee. Conservation Commission appointed Janet Benjamins to the Community Preservation Act Committee, so she's still in the circuit. Conservation Committee appointed Mike Harnett as Conservation Representative to the sixteen fifty-one Forest Advisory Board. Select Board goals, final.
Oh, we're not sure they're final, but.
Ish.
Final-ish.
Final-ish?
What does that mean?
Just, again, kind of, they're in the packet for us to review, if there was anything else that we wanted to alter. It's one of those like, you know, are we happy with where they're at when we look at them? Is there any more input to the goals, or do we feel like we have an overflowing plate?
I think I was hoping to see some of the specific bylaw task force ones.
So, I, you mean what, what they're working on, like the zoning task force?
Yeah, I added the zoning as a item, not as a specific task force thing.
So, you were hoping to see, oh, so when they came to present to us, they listed specific things they were gonna be working on, right? Is that what you were hoping to?
But we can't set them as goals, because they've eliminated several of those already.
So, we would need another presentation to hear.
Yeah.
Because they, I think that they're feeling, my most recent conversation with the chair is that, you know, that it's a huge lift to do some of the stuff that this task force has done.
Where did I put it under?
And they're not sure what they're going to be able to bring to the table for town meeting.
Is it, is it the three-three and three-four, is that, no, three-v, three-four? Is that where it got put under?
No, I think above that, in, under the strategic planning goals, one-C, any zoning changes that may need to be
Yeah.
to support future land management goals.
Okay, so we're still gonna leave it?
We're gonna leave it broad until they come back to us with the specifics of what they were able to accomplish in time for the meeting.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
I make a motion, we approve the goals as stated.
Second, yeah, that will make them final, yes, okay. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, no more final-ish, thank you, Art. Town Administrator's Annual Evaluation. Alright, so I gave everyone a summary document. What I did was I went through the twelve questions that were in our packets, and I did the average answer. So, basically, five was the highest you could get on any particular question, so this gave you the idea of the average answer from all of us on each of those questions. I could go through and just read each question if you want, or I don't think it's necessary since we all did it, but the overall average on all twelve questions combined was four-point-nine, which is pretty.
Stellar. Pretty awesome, thank you.
And collectively decided, that's pretty awesome. Within the.
That's my best one yet. Oh, yay.
That's because Suzanne and I joined.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that would have to be.
I also think too, just from being on the board now for several years, and I'm sure Amy can, you know, Amy can speak to this and Art, now that you've been here a few years as well, that we've seen, when we do list areas of improvement or when we do address those with you, we see you working on them, and we see the progress on those areas. And although maybe like there's still more work to do on them, we know that you actively address them and do work on them, and I think that's, 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 that's meaningful for us to see that. We know you hear us, and we know that you hear the residents, so that was, that's big. Was there any input or questions?
I guess if you, you have any questions on, on the comments?
I did have a couple, I mean, it's, I know it's splitting fine hairs now, but before I say that, I just, I do want to say that it continues to be my great privilege to serve Eastham as its town administrator, and I hope you guys know that, because it's been mostly a great pleasure, and, you know, sometimes I don't do it justice, but I really do give it my all when I, whenever I can. So, I guess the two weak areas that I noticed is, first of all, Art, I found your, your insight into my issue with taking on.
Too much.
Too much of people's issues, small issues. I found that insight really helpful, because sometimes I don't, I don't see that, and I think you framed it in a way that allowed me to really see it, because you said, you know, she's a good listener, so she starts to listen, but she doesn't always set that boundary of, I'm only listening.
Yes.
I'm empathizing, but I might not be able to fix it, so, thank you, that, that helps me a lot, I think, because I'm struggling with that, and I know you all see me struggling with that, and it is a huge time difference. And that's, you know, for residents, it's a lot of different types of situations where people think that I'm going to be able to fix something that really town government can't fix. And then the other thing that I noticed is working, you, you all seemed to, or a majority seemed to think that I was not out and visible in the community enough, so I wondered if that, I mean, you know, it's a four-point-nine, and I know I'm splitting hairs, but that was a lot of four there, so I know I could do better with that. So, I may ask you sort of what your vision of that might be, and working with community groups and stakeholders or solve problems. Again, it could be that I'm over-solving. Okay, alright, I'm good then, thank you so much. Those are my only questions when I read those.
Those were the other printouts, if you wanted them to.
Yeah, but thank you, they were very clear, and, and I, I appreciated the feedback, especially from you, Jerry, new member feedback, thank you.
Yeah, it's nice, I know it's hard when you're a new member to do the evaluation, because you don't feel like you have the history, but sometimes having like fresh eyes and a perspective from fresh eyes is helpful, too, because you're seeing it a little differently.
Plus, you had to put up with me and Finance Committee, so.
Yeah, he knows me well, yeah.
Alright, so, next is Town Administrator's Report.
I didn't have too much, just wanted to add something today, the Housing Team, the Community Development Team, and the Affordable Housing Trust representative met with the Cape Cod Commission, who's trying to do a regional housing plan for Barnstable County. So, we, they have been sitting down with each town, and we had a really actually productive discussion with them. We all felt pretty good about it, and I'm, we're trying to get them, or they're asking for our feedback, and what specifically could the commission do that might help us advance our housing goals? And so, one of the things that I gave them today is. And so, one of the things that I gave them today is, all this special legislation, it's like reinventing the wheel all the time, maybe you could take on some of those bigger issues as a Cape-wide thing, a Cape-wide piece of legislation, as opposed to each town having to do it individually. But we had other things too, but mostly templates and policy issues, and helping us with RFP templates for different types of, of housing issues, but it was a good, good meeting.
Well, even like the ADU bylaws, the Cape Cod Young Professionals really started that ball rolling.
Yes, they really did a lot, yeah.
And they went the whole county with it, to every town, and that was huge.
And they were talking about design guidelines, too.
Right, and having consistency between towns would be really.
Helpful.
Helpful. Because like you said, then you're not reinventing.
Right. But I don't, do you have any other updates that you want to throw in, Rich?
We did get another award notice for loan reduction from the Mass Water Protection Abatement Trust.
Oh, yeah, that's great news.
We already been notified of loan forgiveness of a certain amount, but we were notified due to, ARPA funds of the state was able to apply of an additional, about $500,000 of additional loan forgiveness on our water project, so.
Great.
And the, I guess I wanted to mention this earlier, and I didn't, I need, I guess I want you to know that I did advocate with the School Committee when we were talking about this additional $38.1 million, that if there is an, an excess capacity at the end of this contract, that they use it to pay down the borrowing for the towns, so that it, it doesn't just go into a fund or an article that they get to use on other things in the future, but that they
Absolutely.
really think about, and they wouldn't make a commitment to do that, but I'm going to continue to press for that, I just wanted to let you know, that's, that's our official position.
I have a question, on your report, the Treasurer Collector, can you explain, I don't understand what that is, a new lockbox for allow process incorrect payments, could you explain what that is?
Lockbox is a weird word, but.
Yeah, tax bills, instead of having every single tax bill.
Coming directly to the Collector's, directly to Collector's office, it goes to a lock, lockbox, which is controlled by the financial institutions, but the new service is, gives us a little bit enhanced features that will process payments and incorrect payments or partial payments a little bit more efficiently, so we're getting that extra service at a nominal extra cost.
Sure, can you give me a little more, I mean, what do you process an incorrect payment, before that wouldn't happen, that wouldn't get processed?
It would just take a week.
No, they would reject it, and it would come back, and then we'd have to.
Okay, so that process has been speeded up?
Yeah.
And a lot of it's electronic interface downloading information from the provider directly into our accounting, our financial system, that makes it much more efficient.
Thank you.
Next is new upcoming agenda items, or anything that people feel like need to follow up on that aren't being addressed?
I have one question, based on a press article, so I don't know how true, in the province on the internet, talking about the size of, of houses in, in Eastham, and then there's a task, I have never heard of this task force, can you explain that a little bit?
It's the zoning task force.
Oh, it's the zoning, okay, it wasn't written, the zoning task force, what is this?
Oh, yes.
And that's one of the things that they're looking at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Were we expecting to hear back from them?
You want, you're hoping for?
When did they say they were coming?
It wasn't that long ago, but we did say there would be another one before.
Yeah, before town meeting.
And the warrant is opening, so maybe we could check in and see.
I'll check in with them.
I just saw Mary too.
I don't necessarily expect anything for.
But it's just nice to get an update, especially on something that's of such interest in the community.
Right, I was very interested, so.
Yeah, one of the things I put in my report, last report, I think, was the short-term rental status statistics, that the zoning task force was actually concerned about, because they're like, are we capturing all of our short-term rentals? And it turned out the company that was hired to take a look at it found less rentals than we actually have registered, so we're actually doing a very good job at, at collecting those, but.
All right, so we'll look into bringing them back.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the regular session minutes of December 5th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Just one, I did point out to Lori, there were a couple dates, and there where she had the goal setting moved to October 19th, oops, but it was December 19th.
December.
There's a couple places where.
She needs some extra Christmas shopping time.
I guess so, I guess so, but other than that, it's great.
Thanks, Amy. All right, so with changes made, and we have a second, do we?
Second?
Yep, can I call vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then, other business and correspondence, I was just going to quickly mention, you know, we had the wonderful event, Tea Time, and simultaneously, there were multiple events happening in Eastham this past weekend, on the same day. And I know sometimes people look at an event happening on the same day as like, you know, almost competitive, but I thought it was wonderful, so I.
Could go to one, another.
I feel like Saturday in Eastham was like, just, it was happening all over town, there was like, events happening, you know, there was a holiday market, there was the Tea Time event, there was stuff going on at a lot of different retail stores in town, and I think it created a really nice draw. So I'm hoping next year, we can almost see an effort to coordinate and create like an Eastham Weekend.
That would be great.
Right, where, you know, we do something, we do a community event, and we, we let our businesses know, this is the weekend of the community event, you know, you can either join our event, or it would be a great weekend to create a little story in Eastham, you know? Because I think it worked really well, it was just kind of a happy, a happy accident, so, yeah.
Mr. has theirs at the first weekend of the month, and you can go on like the, I think the Chamber is, Spearheads it, but then you can like, if you're curious, they list out like their series of events, just as like a.
Yeah. Just as something, yeah, it's a draw, because I mean, no one's going to spend eight hours at one thing, but you are going to, you could spend, you could potentially spend, you know, six hours in town doing different things, so, yeah. All right, so then I will take a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the Board of Water Commissioners.
Not to return.
Not to return to the Select Board.
So we're Wes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, Wes.
All right, we are Water Commissioners.
For hanging in with us.
No, I feel like Wes should get a cookie.
Yeah, we had, I know, gosh, sorry, Wes, two hours.
He's giving a special chocolate.
Get the chocolate cookie, ready?
Woo!
Will you at least leave?
Those are from environmental partners.
Oh, those are from you. That's awesome.
So we have a couple maps here, we had a Capital Projects Water Meeting this morning, and have discussed, you know, the, the areas in the seashore about, you know, dead ends and curb stops and all that kind of good stuff, and I guess, Wes, if you want to kind of go over what you, you said this morning, and.
Yeah, just a quick rundown, we're in the process right now of designing our last two contracts, which are going to be Contracts 22 and 23 to go out to bid. 22 comprises kind of the last little group of roads, I would say it's called, like, called the Northwest Region. And then Contract 23 is going to be effectively going down Cable Road, Ocean View Drive, Dome Road, Nossett, Light Beach Road, and Tomahawk Trail. And that one's going to provide probably more of, more of the kind of hurdles permitting-wise, and just kind of more intricate details, getting parcels that are fully encapsulated within the National Seashore, how we're going to provide them with water, what the best way to do that is. We're currently doing that, in talks with the National Seashore, and of course, the town here, to try to come up with the best, best manner. I'm happy to go into whatever level of detail anybody would like to go into.
Yeah, I know, one concern we had before was the, the fact that these are longer roads at dead end, and number of users, and flushing, and that sort of thing.
Right, so when, whenever we're designing a water main, it's obviously, or it's always, you know, optimal if you can create a loop, so going down Cable Road, Ocean View Drive, and Dome Road is more ideal than taking out Ocean View Drive in a hole and having two dead ends. Amy, you brought up the concern about Nossett Light Beach Road winding up there to that dead end. In that case, there's not much you can do, you know, if you want to bring water out there, if you want to provide fire protection and, and drinking water, you know, you're going to have that dead end, but this is something that the water operator, Whitewater, tries to focus on, typically in the spring, but even today, they were out flushing on South Sunken Meadow and North Sunken Meadow out on Harms Way, just trying to pull water to those kind of distant areas that don't have a loop, to try to turn that water over, and get that, get that, you know, nice and freshened up. And we typically focus on that in the spring, you know, before people kind of come back to town.
And I know we've all kind of talked about this before with, you know, initially when the water system was approved, it was, everybody pays for it, everybody gets it, gets it available to them anyway. And I know there's going to be some tricky spots up here on Nossett Light Beach Road with people that are completely surrounded by park and getting it to their property, but I think Wes pointed out this morning that we have set, kind of set precedence in other parts of town where we can't necessarily get to your property line, you know, with a curb stop. And it's, it's incumbent on the homeowner then to incur the added, added expense to get the, get it to their property. And there are some other, there's, I know at least one other seat property within the seashore that's had to cross, you can see in this, in the map with all the green on it, how some of these are just totally surrounded.
Property here.
By seashore, but I know there's one down here at the intersection of Nossett and Dome Road, kind of in the bottom there, that, that tee, that, that house is completely encapsulated, and they did run water in there, so they, they had to go through whatever process the seashore required
Right.
to get water to those properties, or to that property. So it can be done, and so a bunch of the people up by Nossett Light Beach Road will have to, even on Cable Road, they'll have to do that, because they are surrounded by, by seashore.
Yeah, and I, I think that precedent has been set in the sense that instead of going across the national park land and going through that hurdle permitting-wise, on behalf, you know, the town on behalf of those homeowners, I think we just leave them within the road right-of-way, and if and when they do want to connect, obviously they'll file a permit with us, or the town, rather, but I think we're more than happy to assist in any way that we can. And I think we just have to make sure that town, National Park are on the same page.
Exactly.
I, I don't think it might make the most sense to necessarily snake along all these parcels if we don't know that they actually want to connect, some of the people that are, you know, tucked into the National Seashore may have, you know, some of the nicer water, just because there's not really too much development around them, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good plan, that makes sense.
So do we still need to decide about what we wanted to do with these two little tails?
Well, I guess we'd only have to decide if we didn't want to do it, because it was already in the initial plan, and they've been.
Right, so.
They've been progressing as if it's all included.
Currently, we are designing and permitting as if we're going to go to the very end, because the added lift is really minimal, you know, to go through that process, we might as well just permit to the end of the road, we're going to put it out to bid as such, or at least that's our intent, if we ever want to reduce that scope, we can, even mid-contract, there's a lot of power, you know, the contract's written with the town having all the power, so I'm not, you know, the most of it. So if we wanted to curtail any sort of, you know, distance, we'd go, I think more of the question is, that we're finding is the, the seashore, I think, has expressed some concern around like Tomahawk Trail, but again, I think, you know, from your point of view, Jackie, the town did appro, or did agree to bring water to all these homes, and I think a big part of that is not just drinking water, but fire protection.
Yeah. Which is why I think, when, like you said too, you know, that you're going to stick to the, to the roadway, and bring it to, as far to the roadways makes sense, you're still providing all the fire protection that way.
Yeah.
Which I think is priority.
Yep.
So I think that makes a lot of sense.
Do we need to vote to approve going forward with these two bids, it's just.
No.
I think we need to vote if we change it.
Maybe say something different.
Right, that's correct, we brought it before you to say, should we continue to pursue this, and I think we've kind of circled around to, it's just probably better to continue to plan for it, and then if at some point there's a reason not to, then we would bring it back.
Yeah, one of the, the things Wes brought up, the seashore is concerned about Tomahawk with archaeological.
Oh, yeah.
Impacts, and so that would come up if they do some testing and find.
Yeah, so.
I mean, they were just digging out there this past summer.
Yeah, so they were doing some investigations out there, because they're going to be demolishing a few of the homes out there, and it sounds like they, you know, realize that it's more sensitive archaeologically than they even initially understood it to be, which I, you know, I respect that, and I don't want to kind of do anything that would be detrimental to that. But again, so when we have those kind of situations, we contract with a company called PAL, out of Rhode Island, and they do our whole archaeological kind of assessment, and in certain areas, we just went down Hemmenway Road and Fort Hill Road, we have a full-time archaeologist with us, kind of watching every bucket we take out of the ground, and it's actually a good learning experience for us and the crew, it's kind of fun to understand, we haven't found anything significant, but it's just a nice added layer of insurance in case we do, so.
Especially out here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so does anybody have any reservations about moving forward, or please leave it as?
That's good, yeah, that's great, yeah, thank you for the added work on here.
Yeah, absolutely.
And your patience for tonight's meeting.
I know.
Well, it was good to hear about the high school, too.
Yeah, you are a taxpayer.
You're a resident, so, yeah.
Good questions, I can't believe we're coming down the homestretch of this water project here, too.
I know.
I know, there's a lot more blue on the map than there is.
Yeah, we didn't. I haven't seen any pickets on that road where we dug out all those trees, nobody seems to be complaining there.
Well, we did turn, what, 23 acres over to permanent conservation.
It was actually in the.
And created new turtle habitat.
Okay, well, I, I thought in the article that I read, in, in, I was down independent, was a good article in the sense of saying, there was, there was a trade-off, here it is, this is here, showed where, where this is.
Just to clarify, yeah.
That's it, so I thought that was excellent.
Yeah, and we'll start to see some more activity on that site, it's not set in stone, but it's probably, I'm anticipating January, February, March, like, within the next three months, we'll start to see the clearing of the stumps, kind of grading for the road, and then in the spring, when the weather turns, they'll get back out there and start, you know, building the treatment building and bring the wells online, and they have until January of 2024 to substantially complete that job, so we're very much looking forward to that.
When we're done, will, will all the roads, in other words, one of the positive things about putting water down the road is you guys go in and take all the, all the bumps and the bottles, and you flatten it right out, but there won't be water lines down every road, will there?
There will be water lines down every road in town, I believe there's only been one road where we had, it was just effectively one homeowner that owned a, a right-of-way, and they did not allow for the taking, which, you know, we understood that, and they understood that they wouldn't have water, so from, just off the top of my memory, it's just one.
Yep.
One road.
So some of those roads still have a bunch of potholes and bumps and everything, will get flattened out at some point in time?
If they're coming up on the, like, with a dirt road, we try to do our best to flatten them out, but, you know, with a dirt road, it's, it's.
They're going to re-bump.
Yeah.
No, I understand that, I mean, by saying the ones you've done.
Yeah.
And they're, they're flat, they're great, but there's some other roads, some of the dirt roads, that still have gigantic potholes in them, et cetera, and I just.
That haven't gotten watered yet.
I'm making the assumption that they haven't gotten water yet.
Yeah, yeah, some, a lot of them haven't, some of them, I just have, you know, they'll just have a scenario where they'll either be at the low point of a road, or however their road is, where you can't, you know, when we go in, we put the main in, but we're not doing necessarily drainage work, so people call me, they say, we have this big puddle at the low point of the road, what can you do to help us here? And I can do as much as I can, just with simple grading, and I always try to have our crews try to do the best they can, but, you know, shy of putting in catch basins, or, you know, paving a dirt road, and there's not much you can do all the time.
And Jackie, one other question I have, just so that I make sure I understand it, when we're done, okay, we're going to pave all the public roads, have repaved all the public roads.
We will have, yes.
We will have.
We will have, that's what I said.
We're already.
We're already doing it, but, okay, we will have.
We're trying to have enough money left in the borrowing capacity at the end to pave all the public roads, because right now, SRF won't let us use their funds to do some of that.
You're right, only the mandatory zone, I think, so far, that they've let us, right?
The private roads will not be paved.
If it was paved before, we will repave it.
It was, yeah, like, I'm on a private road, it was repaved when they.
Everything that was touched.
Goes back.
Goes back the way it was. Yep.
Correct.
Are we doing any hold on some of that paving because of potential of wastewater?
No.
Okay.
And a lot of.
Not right now, no, because we don't have any plan with roads in it, yeah.
So primarily, you know, we just went back to the.